Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Tonight, the students' presentation will be brought to us by Arbor Intermediate School. And here is the principal, Heather O'Donnell, to tell us more.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
We invited some of the representatives from our clubs that we have at Arbor. So we have, I believe, six different clubs, and our students are going to present not only what they do for those clubs, but really what they love about the clubs. I want to start off by introducing Nicholas Gibbs, who is going to start off the presentation.
Hello, my name is Nicholas Gibbs, and I'm a fourth grade student at Arbor Intermediate School. Thank you for having us here today. At Arbor, students can join clubs at may after school one day a week. We have clubs that include a wide variety of interests for any student. Tonight, we want to process about the clubs we have at Arbor. You will hear from the members of the clubs, and they will tell you about them and why they love them. First up, the Technology Club.
Good evening, my name is Bian, and I'm a fourth grade student at Arbor Intermediate School. I'm a member of Technology Club. In Technology Club, you create video games on scratch using block codes, sprites, backdrops, and the paintbrush tool. In Tech Club, students use block code to create video games, as well as have the opportunity to modify other people's games. Something I like about Tech Club is that every game is different and unique. Even if you code someone else's game, you could customize it to make it yours. Scratch is the world's largest coding community for children, and a coding language with a simple visual interface that allows young people to create digital stories, games, and animation. Animation. Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Brielle.
And I'm Grayson.
I'm a fourth grade student.
I'm a fifth grade student.
At Arbor Intermediate School. We both are members of D and D Club. In this club, we play Dungeons and Dragons, which is a game where we pretend to be different characters. As the characters, we use different spells to fight monsters like goblins, rat cakes, and evil boar. We can also get pets like little bees and make pets like wolves. You can level up and get more spells. You can even go to different adventures.
What I really love about this club is, in-game, you can get pets that either attack or heal. We play as a team and have to negotiate to progress in the game. And at the end, you can battle a final boss to win. There's more expeditions to do, like there's one with a shop full of goblins that where you can obtain pets. I'm glad I had the opportunity to play, and I'm happy I was chosen for the club.
Good evening, my name is Raina, and I'm a fourth grade student at Arbor Intermediate School. I am a member of Lego Club. In this club, we build Legos as a team with instructions. We would take turns, so it was fair, and we had a lot of fun. What I really love about this club is it was really fun learning about the people in my group and making friends.
Hi, my name is Asher Danapoli.
And I'm Adetse Ndele.
We are fifth grade students at Arbor Intermediate School. And this club, Chess Club is a new club at, to Arbor Intermediate School. We created, but, that was created by us.
We came up with the idea, but she did to the principal, and here we are.
In this club, we create, we create new opportunities and teach openings and strategies to help kids start their journey as chess players, casually or competitively, no matter where they come from.
What I really love about this club is the idea to teach, collaborate, and socialize in a fun environment. Something else that brings me joy is to see chess players like me and Asher learn in a healthy environment.
In this club, we bring a fun place to those students in our club that want to play chess.
Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Nicholas Gibbs, and we are the representatives of the Community Service Club.
Hi, my name is Uzi Druelet. Me and Nicholas are fourth grade students. Students in Community Service Club, we help different causes that help our community. So far, projects have included the Cube Scanaway War, the Clothing Collection, and the Waka Tada for the Plague field Hurein Society. We're also encouraging kids to support our school by growing the Arbor Cardinal. I'm really happy to be a part of the Community Service Club because I get to help my community, work, be creative, and have fun.
One of the things that we did as a group was help coordinate the school's food drive that we call the Super Bowl. So S-O-U-B-E-R-B-O-W-L. We worked together to promote these causes by morning announcements and flyers. What I like about the club is that we can have fun while expressing yourself while being creative. Thank you, and have a good night.
Good evening, my name is Raina Ramallah, and I'm a fourth grade student at Arbor Intermediate School.
And my name is Adetse Ndele, and I'm a fifth grade student at Arbor.
We are both members of the Harry Potter Club. In this club, we spend time as a team exploring the wizarding world of Harry Potter. When we first joined the club, we were assigned to our houses and asked to make a poster to represent our groups, such as Ravenclaw, Hufflepuff, Slytherin, and Gryffindor. He was in Slytherin, and I was in Ravenclaw. Each of our houses were assigned a pet and asked to spend time making owl cages, which was a lot of fun. Finally, we had a grand final feast where students from middle school and high school joined us to discuss Harry Potter and eat yummy snacks.
What we really love about this club is that we get to vividly use our imagination with our houses to make the environment we were in to make it somewhat like the mystical and unpredictable world of Harry Potter. We also learned to play Quidditch, which is played with three balls, two batters, two defenders, four runners, and two seekers. The objective of the game was to score as many points as possible in Rubik's before the Golden Snakes was found. Getting the house that the seeker was in to get fifty points. Have a good day.
All of these guys worked so, so hard the last few days with their presentations. I think they all just did such a good job.
On behalf of the Board of Education, I'm going to come and stand with Ms. O'Donnell, and we're going to present all the students who spoke this evening with a certificate for the great job that they're doing in all the clubs that are now at Arbor. Where my kids were at Arbor, those clubs did not exist. So I have to tell you guys, you're doing a fantastic job, and kudos for your advisor and your principal for supporting you and allowing you to express yourself, to be involved in things after school, but have fun at the same time, and like you said, in the same environment. So as your principal calls your names, you can come up and receive your certificate.
Ashley Danapoli. Nicholas Gibbs. Uzi Druelet. Bian Shaw. Adil Seneh. Grayson Fox. Brielle Brady. Raina Rahalas. Nicole Zanino. I'd also just want to acknowledge Ms. Koby, our club advisor for Harry Potter Club, and Mr. Frye is our Technology Club and Lego Club advisor.
I also just wanna acknowledge Ms. Koby, our club advisor for Harry Potter Club, and Mr. Frye is our technology club and Lego club advisor.
Okay, thank you, everyone from Arbor Intermediate School. Thank you for all the family support and all the advisors and administration. Thank you for coming out this evening and get home safely.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Courtney, when we get to personnel and labor relations, can you do the reading of the advances out tonight?
Okay, that was, um, eighth west.
Eighth west. Our next on the agenda, we have student, um, representative's reports.
Good evening, everyone. Um, I don't see very many people left from that crowd, but, um, personally.
Call them back in for you.
I was just, uh, hearing all that, it reminded me of my time, um, at King. And, um, I think it's really important that, um, that children are forming these long-lasting bonds and, um, and these important positive concepts such as community service are being introduced at such a stage instead of just high school. And, um, it really like sets everybody up for involvement later throughout high school and higher education. But, um, back to what's going on throughout the high school. As, uh, mark period wr- three wraps up, um, everyone's gearing up towards the finish line. And so, just listing off some events that are happening. The, um, GSA, uh, is having a clothes, clothing swap, um, on twenty, uh, Friday, April twenty-eighth. And basically how that works is it's gonna be, the, all profits raised through entrance fees are gonna be going to, uh, gay rights, uh, organizations. And the, there will be, uh, clothing exchanged through students, uh, where, you know, students can swap clothing, um, which ultimately will reduce waste. And, um, there is also, um, plans by the Science National Honor Society to, um, revamp the pond, add fish to it, um, in the, in the patent courtyard. There was also the FBLA Mission Life, um, which is, it was, I believe it was eleventh annual, correct? Um, eleventh annual Mission Life, uh, held on March thirty-first.
Did you volunteer to get smashed with pie?
Oh, how I wish I could've. Um, I helped them set up, but I, I was only a specter to that. Yes, there was pie involved, it was a great basketball game, um, and there was ultimately five thousand dollars raised and donated to the Center for Food Action. There was also today, um, a very successful blood drive run by the National Honor Society. The second one this year where students came out in droves to help donate blood, which is always, you know, in very high demand and really does save lives. There is also the Heat Show run by the ICCA. It's basically a, um, cultural show being, uh, presented April twenty-eighth on Friday. And, um, among other things is the recent, uh, poetry presentations by the Dodge Poetry Association, which happened this Wednesday. It was, um, organized by the English Department where four poets, uh, came in and presented to many different English classes, um, really diverse and interesting, um, pieces of poetry, which were really interesting to me. And I think, uh, it was a really amazing opportunity and I know people who were really captivated by it. There's also the Livingston Rutgers Theater Company, um.
This is a coincidence.
Theater Club is traveling to the Rutgers Livingston, um, the Livingston Rutgers Theater Company on April twenty-three to, um, see its performances and ten workshops. And, um, regarding college, um, we have most acceptances that have come out at this point and, um, everyone's gearing up for scholarships, which the college counseling department has doing, has been doing a really good job of. Um, recently, they started posting local scholarships, which most people don't really look at because they're not enormous lump sums, but they quickly add up and it's really nice that these scholarships that I otherwise would not have known about or being, you know, pushed and, um, made widely available for everybody. So, that's also, that's great. And, um, one of the few things that, um, one, one of the, one of the things that are remaining on students' minds, especially for seniors as we wrap up the year, is, um, AP exams and the academies that have, um, Rutgers tests such as Dynamics and Anatomy. So, at this point in time, most classes have reached their, um, curriculum, like the end of their curriculum because they've been working so fast. And because of the summer academies, they've been working at this since the summer. And so, at this point in time, we have roughly a month or two to prepare. And, um, as, as I've personally seen and many of my friends have talked about, um, there is many resources, especially by the AP teachers that are made available to start preparing for this. And I think, um, every AP teacher that I know is doing a really good job at preparing for this. And, uh, yeah, that's the one thing.
Can I just comment on that? So just to, so you understand the process, the AP exams are national tests and they're set a certain day, a certain time of the year, typically in the beginning of May. Uh, there are many school districts across the country who start in August, so typically they'll have a month before, school districts in the east, uh, for these, these, uh, preparation for these courses. Uh, we offer, and Vera, you, uh, you, you hit it right in the head, uh, the, the summer programs that kinda get us up to speed, um, with some preliminary and, and to start actually the course of the AP classes. Because again, if we didn't, we'd, we'd almost lose a month of instruction that California, Texas, uh, all the west, west coast, uh, states have because it's a national test and it's set on, on, on the same day across the country. So east coast states don't have it a month later because they start school a month later. So when Vera says they're wrapping up their, their, you know, uh, curriculum, uh, for the course, this means the AP courses because of, uh, get, now, it's, now it's time to prepare for the test.
Yeah. Thank you for just.
Yeah, no problem.
Yeah.
It's, it's confusing a little bit.
Yeah, it, it really is. And, uh, the, the, thank you for that clarification, because, uh, I mean, might be, I don't know if everyone's familiar with, uh, AP curriculum, but thank you. But, um.
Yeah, that about wraps up my comments.
I had a question about AP tests. Um, when I was taking AP tests, I was so stressed out all the time. So I was just wondering, like, if you caught a vibe as like how people are feeling, like if they need anything.
Yeah.
I could've like had like a little reminder, like, hey, like counselors are here to chat, cause like, I was just so stressed during that.
Yeah, um, there is been a, um, I, I've mentioned in previous meetings that there are, um, the Haven has opened up a lot of opportunities for not just students struggling with mental health, but students who might need support, support in general, whether it be, um, academic support groups or athletic support groups. And I know many people rely on those. And so, there is help that is available. And, um, I would have to say that because of things such as COVID and, um, other occurrences within the past, um, I believe you took the exams around COVID era?
No, I took them the year before.
The year before, oh, right. Well, I mean, previously, I mean, all of my experiences with the AP exams have been, uh, very challenging. As, as, and.
Absolutely.
Along with my peers who had to take it virtually, had to take a modified form of it. And, um, it's, and, and, and the curriculum frequently changes. But, um, this year has kinda shaped up pretty nicely where it feels like we're back to what it's supposed to be like. And there's also the additional resources available online through the College Board, AP classrooms. And so, and, and also through Albert I O, um, schools have really empowered us to allow us to study on our own. And I feel like overall, there is, at least with seniors, there is, um, dare I say, some optimism.
Good, that's good. Like, kinda, when, when I was taking them, it was kinda like sending us to the wolves.
Yeah. No, I, I think, I think, I think there is definitely a strong support network. Do you?
Thank you, Vera. Um, good evening, everyone. So, we are three quarters in, only a marking period left, and definitely things are starting to get busy. Since we last met for St. Patrick's Day, there was a bunch of fundraisers going on throughout the school. Um, the freshman class did like a pot of gold fundraiser where teach, where students could drop, um, gold money into teachers' pots and then whichever teacher got the most gold would dress as a leprechaun. Um, so, that happened. And then the sophomores had like a bake sale for St. Patrick's Day. Um, the PHS Choir hosted their annual coffee house on March twenty-fourth, and it's like their biggest fundraiser of the year. Their student performances, singing, spoken word, stuff like that. So I think, um, that was great. And then also the Black Student Union and the Public Forum Seminar Club hosted their first ever Mellowing March Culture Night, um, on March thirtieth. And in the event, they had singing, dancing, food. And I know there was many students, um, who attended as well as parents from across the district. Um, and I think they hope to make it a tradition for years to come because both clubs are, um, just started this year, so it was their first time hosting it. And then, of course, Ramadan has been going on, so there has been a lot going on with the MSA because of that. Um, last Thursday, we hosted a collaborative iftar at Edison High School with, um, Edison, of course, JP Stevens, and North Brunswick High School. And we had over three hundred attendees from across those high schools. Um, and it's great to see like high schoolers planning an event for high schoolers, um, so that was great. And then also on Monday, um, there's the Interfaith Iftar at the Muslim Center of Middlesex County, which is in Piscataway. And I know I saw Dr. Connors there, Ms. Lane there, and Ms. Rashid there, um, as well as Dr. Gray. Um, and it was just an opportunity to learn all about Ramadan because Piscataway does have a growing Muslim population. And then yesterday, we had our first ever Piscataway District-wide Iftar, um, hosted at the high school, which was so, so good. And thank you, Ms. Rashid, for spearheading the efforts behind that. Um, we had over a hundred attendees, um, with faculty, Muslim faculty, parents, and students from all across the district. Um, and I know many enjoyed the event and hopefully we can make it a tradition for years to come. Um, and then also, there's just been many inclusivity efforts because of Ramadan. Um, like for example, we asked, um, Dr. Gray, Mr. Bolisano, if we could be excused from gym, um, physical activity during Ramadan, and that was done. Um, gym teachers offered like an alternative assignment, uh, during lunches, they don't have to be sitting in the cafeteria. Um, it's like not just at the high school, I know my little sister at MLK, um, they can go to the library during lunch. So that's a great opportunity. But overall, um, I think the district, Dr. Gray, everyone involved has been doing such a good job with that, um, which I cannot thank, um, them enough for. And then, of cour- last thing relating to Ramadan, um, there's obviously Eid, which is the celebration at the end of Ramadan. And this year, it's either on Friday, April twenty-first, or Saturday, April twenty-second, cause we do follow the lunar calendar. Um, so we don't know until like a day before. And I know the district calendar put it down as that Saturday, um, and offered to excuse the absence if it's on that Friday. Um, but just something to keep in mind for years to come, um, with that excuse absence, there's still students missing tests and then like missing a whole day of work does catch up to you. Um, and I don't think like students should have that at the back of their mind, like that stress while they're celebrating that they're missing all that school. So, like, because it was like a Friday or Saturday, like giving off that Friday instead, um, if that like happens in other years. And then, last note, um, so that's like the one major, there's two major holidays for Muslims, Eid al-Fitr and Eid al-Ahdha. So that's Eid al-Fitr, bless you, um, that signals the end of Ramadan. And then Eid al-Ahdha signals the last month of the Islamic calendar. And usually that falls not during the school year, but starting next year, um, it is. Um, it's gonna be either June sixteenth or seventeenth of twenty twenty-four. Um, I know that's like really close to the last day of school, so if, even if that's like just marked on the school calendar, um, I know many districts, surrounding districts have done that. And then maybe looking into giving that day off in like the twenty twenty-five to twenty twenty-six school year, um, that would be cool. Um, and then, of course, the high school has so much going on. Um, on May third, the PHS, PHS chapter of the Technology Student Association is attending their state conference. Um, and they're gonna be competing in a lot of competitive events. Um, and it was cool to see like the Arbor School, they have their own techno- tech club, and then how much it develops by the time they get to high school. Um, so like the fact that they're getting exposed to it at such a young age. And then also, Ms. Ravini, the juniors dean, is heading a col- a, a trip to Boston, um, a college tour, um, of Northeastern University, as well as a presentation at Boston College. So students that meet a specific criteria, um, are getting exposed to colleges outside of New Jersey and the fact that it's not just Rutgers, um, that's, um, available to students. And then obviously, like Vera was saying, there's AP exams coming up. Um, and yes, teachers have definitely been, um, preparing us for that, but also reminding us that it's just a test and it doesn't define you. So that's good. Um, but there is state testing for juniors, um, during AP exams, which many students have, um, expressed concern with. It is in the morning, but having to take like the state testing and then the, um, already hard AP exam after, um, might be challenging. So I'm not sure what we could do with that if they could take the makeup testing the week after. Um, and yeah, also, um, I know this is something I mentioned before with Sedex, so of course, they've been doing great. Um, but if we had the option to pay with Apple Pay at Sedex, um, at checkout, because I know the vending machines have that option and many students don't carry cash or don't have money in their account. Um, and they use Apple Pay all the time at the vending machine, so if we could explore maybe using it for Sedex, so. But yeah, that's all I had, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, gentlemen.
I have a little comment. I have to, you know, really give a big shout out to the MSA students. It was completely students-led. Um, they did an amazing job and I think it was a great iftar. So I hope it's, uh, you know, beginning of a tradition, so, thank you.
Well, being we're talking about the students, I wanna give you a round of applause for all the work you put in. People don't know you were behind the scene and I know you wanted to keep it that way, but I'm gonna let it be known in public. As the, as the two students let it be known, it was your spearheading that made the event come about. And thank you for taking on the task and being quite successful with it. I did see the pictures and kudos.
It was all the support of the board, the administration, Dr. Gray, Dr. Bolisano, everybody was there. Um, the sponsors, the volunteers, the students. It was a really truly a community event and it was great. And I think that's the beauty of the Piscataway School District is the diversity. And every time we celebrate it, we just make it better, so.
I have a little question, it's a very little question. First of all, I'm really proud of you, that was a great report. Um, but I just wanted to know, um, with the pond, little pond area, are there gonna be like other upgrades? Cause that was a really beautiful area and we couldn't really enjoy it just because like there's no seating. So I was just wondering like if you knew like.
Yes.
Okay, cool.
We, um, the money for this is coming from a two thousand dollar grant that was received. Um, I forgot from where, but it was, it was a grant that we had received. And so, the restorations, the original pond was created by the. And so the restorations, the original pond was created by the former AP Environment Science teacher, whose name I cannot recall off the top of my head. But that was a long time ago. And due to his experimentation and a lack of care, the pond eventually fell apart. But frogs being hardy as they are, and, you know, there's still there's still some life there. And so there are students who enjoy going there, but as you said, there is not much seating there. And so in part of our plans, we're hoping to put like benches there, so maybe students can eat lunch there. And we're thinking about perhaps expanding it slightly to allow for different animals, including fishes, as I mentioned. And yeah, also preventing birds, which is an issue, because, yeah, they come down and take the fish sometimes.
Thank you.
Now, Veer and Ram, thank you for always giving great reports. And in this time around, not just talking about all the activities, but it was great, Ram, that you gave a suggestion. And if you do see any of these things at the high school, you know, I saw our business administrator quickly taking notes, because that's a that was a great idea for Apple Pay. So, thank you.
I I wanted to mention, in terms of suggestions, I had received this one for a long time, but I thought it was out of the scope of the board. But there's this one intersection at, it's a it's a it's a left turn, I forgot the name of the street, but it's it's leading onto Beamer Road.
Oh, it's South Randolphville Road.
Yes.
And Beamer Road. And what happened is that the town put a brick bridge there.
Right.
But what happens when you're coming out of south, I lived there, there, come out of South Randolphville Road, and you look left, you can't see over the bridge to see cars coming. And so it's a massive, just at that time of day, when the buses are going down towards the high school.
Exactly.
It's 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 a mess. But that's a town issue, and that's actually what they will tell you, it's a county issue, because that's a county road. So I don't know what your suggestion is, but I live there and I know what you're talking about.
Yeah, it's it's extremely dangerous. And then you add on the fact that it's rush hour and you have relatively new drivers. And I've seen many precarious situations. And glad I'm glad that I haven't seen anyone hurt, but I have heard of many incidents that have happened, many accidents I've witnessed myself. And that's just quite a safety hazard to have that close to a school, so. Yeah.
Veer, on a lighter note, could I ask you about, and I know it's it's not school-sponsored, but prom bids? I've had a few people ask, are they available now? When will they be available for senior prom?
I've heard word of them, but I don't believe that they're available at this moment.
Okay. I just wanted to say, Rahim, your ability to communicate and educate with all of things going on with the Muslim population is really inspiring. So you do it in such a way to elicit such passion.
Thank you.
So I always enjoy hearing everything that's going on. And I also was just curious, do you know which teacher had to be the leprechaun?
I do not.
I'm just curious, do you know?
I do. I'll steal this jeopardy. I it was it was Colonel Kerr. Yes.
That's kind of awesome.
Yeah. He wore he wore the beard, a full, the full set, including the, including the overalls. But he paired it with the camo ABU pants. And so it was quite an interesting sight.
Awesome. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, guys. If you want to, you're free to leave, you've given your reports. I know you have work to do, even though the third marking period is over and your spring break has started. But if you want to hang out with us and continue to be a part of the board, feel free to stay. But on to the next agenda item, I'll be giving the president's report. The present report for April sixth, twenty twenty three. We want to say congratulations to Laura Liebowitz, the key club advisor at the Piscataway High School, for being named Outstanding Faculty Advisor for the entire state of New Jersey. Ms. Liebowitz has been the Piscataway Key Club Advisor for thirty-five years and has developed a wonderful connection with her students, both past and present. In fact, it was her students who nominated her for the award without her knowledge. Ms. Liebowitz was honored at the state conference in Princeton on March twenty fourth and twenty fifth, where several of her students were also given special recognition, including a member of her distinguished officers and first place honor for club website, to Aaron Mora. Congratulations to all. Congratulations also goes out to the young artists and performers at the high school who were selected for the statewide recognition in the arts. The New Jersey Teen Arts Festival selected a number of our students to take part in their festival at the end of May in the areas of visual arts, film and animation, creative writing, dance, and musical theater. And the Drama Club's Ford Production of The Crucible was nominated for four Foxy Awards at Montclair State University, which is a teen version of The Tonys, including outstanding production of a dramatic play. Once again, congratulations to all who contributed to these works of art. One of our district goals for twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three school to enhance and expand opportunities for non-college-bound student learners was highlighted this month in the spring edition of the School Leader Magazine, published by the New Jersey School Boards Association. This article, written by Public Information Officer Gary Miller, highlights the hard work that our counselors, teachers, and administration have done in showing that students that they are, there are paths in workplace, trade schools, or military that can lead to success. Thanks for everyone who guides these students and celebrates their decisions. Now, I would like to turn it over to the floor to David Olivera to discuss the annual comprehensive financial report.
Thank you. So every year, we are required to go through an audit by an independent auditor. Our fiscal year runs from July through June, and our auditors tend to come in late August, early September. They're here for a few weeks. And back in the good old days, they would be wrapped up in November, and the report would be delivered in December. But through no fault of the district and no fault of our auditors, that process has been pushed back, and here we are in April. So and that's due to us waiting, and all districts in the state, waiting for disclosure information from the state of New Jersey that gets further and further delayed each year. So a couple more years, we might be giving the June audit summary for the previous June's audit report. We'll see. Hopefully not, but we'll see. So with that, I'll welcome Dave Gannon, audit partner from PKF O'Connor Davies, and he'll present the audit to the full board.
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
We did, as David mentioned, the audit deadline was pushed back, and we did file the audit on time in accordance with that revised deadline. We also met with the Finance Committee on March first, where we went into the report in a little bit more detail than I'm going to go through tonight, it was going to get kind of high level, where the district stands. As David mentioned, we do do, our audit is performed over the course of probably four weeks. During that time, we do request quite a bit of information from district staff in addition to their normal duties, that they, you know, they have to entertain us for those four weeks and provide all the information that we're requesting. So it certainly is an addition onto their regular responsibilities, and we always do appreciate all the cooperation and the professionalism that we, you know, receive back from them. We do find, you know, that the district's financial records are in excellent condition. That enables us to issue an unmodified opinion on the financial statements that we've opined on. And, you know, that what that means is that the accounting records that the business office is maintaining are in accordance with all the applicable standards of general accounting principles, as well as the numerous regulations and requirements that the Department of Education places on all school districts in New Jersey. One thing I will mention is the district submitted, again, the status of excellence of financial reporting. From internal as well, it was the fifth straight year the district received that award. It's a voluntary program. What it entails is that you send your financial statements to an outside, basically another auditor. And they review those financial statements to make sure that you are disclosing all the information that you're required, you're being transparent in all your financial practices. And then they provide comments back, and if you're not, then obviously they won't give you the award. But again, the district has received that again this year. In New Jersey, I think there's only thirty-two other districts out of the six hundred or so that actually received that award. So it's quite a prestigious award, so congratulations. What I found is that the district's overall financial position is, you know, really in strong financial position. The General Fund, which accounts for your tax levy, most of the state aid, the majority of your general expenses for education, that fund balance was fifty-three point four million dollars at the end of the year, overall increase of five point eight million dollars. Important to know, out of that money, only five point three is actually unrestricted for any purposes that you'd want to use it for. Twenty-one and a half million dollars is restricted for capital reserve. The district, over your many years, has really had a strong capital program where they've invested in facilities without without issuing debt. So a pay-as-you-go program, not incurring interest expense, you know, really putting a lot of money into the facilities within the district. They also have a six and a half maintenance, six and a half million dollar maintenance reserve, a million dollar emergency reserve, unemployment trust fund of one point seven million dollars. Eight point three million dollars of that was utilized for the fiscal year budget that we're in now for twenty twenty-three. That's helping support the operation of the district for this year. And six and a half million dollars at the end of June thirty twenty-two is required to utilize in your fiscal year twenty-four budget. There was an ESIP project, so the Energy Savings Improvement Project, that did occur last year, last July. It was board-approved, fifty and a half million dollar program. At the end of June thirty twenty-two, twelve and a half million dollars in the capital projects remained. Most of that's ESIP, and most of that's already, you know, obviously encumbered and denoted for specific projects. Food service net position was about one point three million dollars, which was an increase of six hundred and twelve thousand dollars. One of the things that's happening all throughout the state is the the food service net positions of almost every school district that we interact with has been increasing dramatically. And one of the big reasons of that was during the pandemic, free lunches were offered. But also, the reimbursement rates that the federal government's been providing have been extremely high as compares to prior years. And that is basically, you know, you operate your food service program, you try to do it efficiently, try to provide, you know, the best service and best food. But all districts are having this, it's a good problem, but the money has to be utilized for the food service program. Can't be utilized for any other reason. There's a certain calculation that private agriculture looks at, you're not over that yet. But if you do go over it, they will contact you to come up with a corrective action plan in order to invest that those monies in the program, whether it's capital-related or actually investing in just improved food product. The district also operates a community education program. For years, it's, you know, provided, you know, excellent programming, wildly successful. Overall, net position for that is two point four million dollars. So again, you know, very healthy. One of the things I always, you know, like to point out with the district, at the end of this June thirty twenty-two fiscal year, your bonded debt was three million five hundred seventy-five thousand dollars. That debt's due in August, so this past August, you paid all your debt off, your bonded debt at least. And that's pretty extraordinary for a district this size. Again, it dovetails back to those capital reserves, the bank reserves. You've been able to utilize money from your budgets to really heavily invest in facilities and improving facilities without issuing debt, without asking the voters to issue debt, take on interest expense, incur long-range obligations. You know, you do have fifteen point million dollars of ESIP police debt, which is different, doesn't get paid by the Debt Service Fund. I guess actually, but in the General Fund. So that's quite an accomplishment. You know, the statutory limits of legal debt capacity for school districts, you're actually able to, and I've never, I would never, you know, encourage this, but you're able to take and take out three hundred and sixty-one million dollars of debt. And the district had zero. So that's quite an accomplishment. Also, based on the level of funding with different grants, we did have, we always have to do a federal and state single audit, which is specific grant programs. This year, we actually had to audit quite a number of major programs, for federal, for state. And we didn't find any compliance issues there. We issued an unmodified opinion on those compliances requirements. And overall, we didn't find any items that we felt needed corrective action to take by the district. If there's any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer.
I just still want to point out that, not that I've been chairing the fiscal committee since two thousand and sixteen in this one year, but I I think that that decisions that were made a few years back were really benefiting from. And, you know, so we're really, we're really healthy. And I want to point out that when you get this book, this book here, that I take it every year and I take this section, because this really is a history. When you get it from the superintendent and the business administrator of, it's a history of our town, it's a history of the schools, it's a history of enrollment, it's a history of economic condition and outlook. And it just provides a great lot of information. And so I would encourage everyone to just really look at that, because and I'll just end by, you know, I I'm very thankful that I feel that we we have an incredible business administrator, and I'm I'm extremely happy that, and we have, you know, and we work with PF O'Connor, that, you know, we pay attention and we're 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 healthy, and that's it.
I want to offer a thank you. Every time you're here, you're very professional when your team is is here for a couple of weeks, like you had said. Always great. You're always available to us if we have a question throughout the year. Dave is always proactive, calling you, saying, you know, what would you think about this one? Or whatever it may be, in case he wants some to bounce an idea off of us, if I come to him with some crazy idea. But I really want to thank you for, you know, your work with us, because we you keep us, keep us straight as well. So thank you for you, your company, and your professionalism.
Good night, everybody. I want to see you in February next year, maybe.
Don't bank on it.
Yeah, it's great.
Next on the agenda is the superintendent's report.
Yeah, there's been a lot of wonderful things going on, I just want to add to that a little bit. Please check out our superintendent's report online under our superintendent's quarter. Highlights include information on our wonderful counseling department, various fine and performing arts awards and programs, our family fun nights, and more of our alumni giving back. I want to, again, thank Gary Miller for starting the Peewee Connection for the Alumni Association. He's really doing a nice job with the high school to try to get some alumni back to talk to our our students about what they're doing in their lives and how successful they are and how much, you know, Peewee has has transformed their ability to do what they want and and be successful. We also highlight Women's History Month activities and Autism Awareness Month. One thing to mention is the opening of our middle and high school athletic seasons. It's a great way to spend a nice spring afternoon if you can get out and watch one of our teams. Our athletic schedules are on our website under the High School Activities and Athletics. And lastly, board members, you have a list of spring activities in your packets. Again, if any of those things change, we'll let you know. And my assistant, Lisa Kavis, will email you every Friday before the next week in case anything has changed. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Dr. Manelli. Next on the agenda, Personnel and Labor Relations, Mr. King.
Be it resolved that the following motions identified as items A through F be approved as presented.
Motion, second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oh, sorry about that. We have to do a roll call. Mr. Secretary, can you please take the vote?
Mrs. Cordino?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mrs. Lane?
Yes.
Ms. Rashid?
Yes.
Ms. Scotto?
I've seen.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Dr. Connors?
I just want to confirm, it's A through E or A through F?
F.
Okay, F, okay. Yes.
Ms. Cherry?
Yes.
Motion's passed.
Next on the agenda, we'll have committee reports. Sarah, can you do the culture and climate, please? Nancy's not here tonight.
Sure.
Thank you.
The Culture Climate Committee Belations Committee met on March twenty first, twenty twenty-three to discuss the positive messaging, community partnership, and wellness services. Positive messaging. Positive messaging displays on school marquees were discussed, including themes of Black History Month, Women's History Month, and Students' Achievement. Student-to-student mentoring videos about AP courses and the D Wing were shared. An updated marketing brochure was shared, posted online, and will be shared with the school community and with companies and organizations in the area. Community partnerships. The mentoring program with the Rutgers Business School is underway. The Rutgers Business students interact with students enrolled in the Business Academy. The National Society of Black Engineers Junior Club students had a car building competition and will introduce NSBE Junior to students in the middle and will introduce NSBE Junior to students in the middle school STEM club. They also plan to visit the Rutgers School of Engineering by the end of the school year. Dr. Gray attended a community connections breakfast that was sponsored by Rutgers Division of Diversity, Inclusion, and Community Engagement, and continues to make valuable connections with Piscataway. On January 20, 30 high school students participated in Diversity in STEM, virtual workshops with Piscataway hosted by Jersey Cares. On February 15, 16 students from each of our middle schools took part in a Black History Month trivia workshop. Wellness services. A letter and survey will be sent to the community and will be available in multiple languages about delayed start times. A Haven Parent Workshop was held on February 2, 2023. Resources are now available on the district website from the workshop. A new business committee meeting start time will now be 7:00 P.M.
Thank you, Ms. Rashid. Next, we have Fiscal Plan and Operations, Dr. Connors.
The Fiscal Plans and Operations Committee met on April 5, which was last night, to discuss the 2023-2024 budget, the 2021-2022 audit, capital projects, and more. On the audit, you just heard Dave Gannon from PF O'Connor, he just presented to us, and the Certificate of Excellence in Financial Reporting application for fiscal '22 has been submitted. 2023-2024 budget, the county approved the tentative budget. The budget will be advertised before the public hearing on April 27. Work on the 2023-2024 budget book is ongoing. The committee discussed Senate Bill S.3732 that provides supplemental stabilization aid to districts that lost state aid for the fiscal 2023-2024. The committee agreed that the additional aid will be used to fund expenses currently in the budget. The committee discussed and approved several changes to the 2023 budget that will be included in the budget adoption resolution on April 28. Facility capital projects, generators, fence installation is ongoing. The startup manufacturer training are scheduled for April 17 through the 20. HVAC upgrades, number one. HNS Mechanical will have contractors at Knollwood and Randolph Hill over spring break to install all of the unit ventilators and casework. NJS, the New Jersey School Development Authority Regional Operating District Grants. Our American Disability Act Toilet Room Upgrade Project applications have been submitted to the New Jersey Department of Education. Water cooler replacements, the district has received a quote for water fountains that will be seeking approval of their purchase at the April 6 board meeting. Installation services will be bid. Paving projects, the projects planned for the summer include playground seal coat and stripping at Arbor, concrete replacement at Kanakamak, side parking lot repaving at Grandview, side lot repaving and concrete replacement at Quibbletown, and driveway repaving and sidewalk addition at Shore. Five-year capital project plan, Mr. Olivera suggested that the plan be reviewed with the full board at the May 2023 board meeting. Energy Savings Improvements Plan, the ESIP, Mr. Olivera reviewed the spring break work schedule with the committee. Professional services, RFPs, requests for purchase and were issued for insurance broker services for both medical and risk property casualty insurance with a due date of April 18, 2023. Transportation, subscription busing applications for the 2023-2024 opened on April 3 at the new rate of $500. New Jersey School Business Legislative stuff, me, Dr. Connors, and Mr. Olivera discussed Assembly 5060 bill that would expand the definition of sick leave to include days such as bereavement care for relatives, children's school conferences, and others. In the business office, we have an investment account. A 90-day term investment was purchased for $15 million on March 10 with an interest rate of 4.80%. The committee reviewed the NJARM statement. The New Jersey School Insurance Group Safety Grant, Piscataway Board of Ed, safety grant this year is $17,305, down from last year's amount of $40,501. New Jersey NJSIG has requested approval to return two-and-a-half million in surplus to members with no strings attached, which would help us cover our lower safety grant amount. And as my report, Madam President.
Thank you, Dr. Connors.
Do we, I'm sorry, do we, is there a reason why the safety grant was reduced by more than half?
I joked last night, I used to be on the Board of Trustees, and actually, when I was on the Board of Trustees, it was doubled. I think that probably in these times of COVID and so on, and they probably do, when I was on their fiscal committee, the New Jersey School Insurance Group, is that they probably were a little bit, that money comes from a certain area, so they didn't give out as much as they had in the past.
Yeah, they just decided they, for three years running, they'd been giving out $4 million a year. They decided to drop it to $2 million. Again, they're hoping to cushion a blow with this other release of funds that they hope to do, and in their mind, they think it's even more flexible because it won't be limited to safety and security measures.
And no one gets denied in those, that's the big thing. You know, it was funny to me, there's 600 districts, and when I was on the Board of Trustees in New Jersey School Insurance, you would just say to them, you'd send a note to the business trader, "Here's $70,000," and you know, you would get districts that wouldn't even like reply back to you, like, "Here's free money." And that always like, that always blew my mind.
And just a side note, the money from the Senate bill has not been determined yet, correct? How much?
Well, it's $102 million.
How they're breaking it down, they did?
66%. Well, you can speak to it, I can speak to it, but...
So if you recall from our budget presentation, we were slated to lose $530,000 roughly. So we would recover two-thirds of that. For us, it's $350,000.
Yeah, they approved $102 million.
Pretty good.
The Senate call.
Thank you, Dave.
You're welcome.
The Curriculum Committee met on April 3, 2023 to discuss the physical education, opt-out plans, summer programs, curriculum updates, and more. Physical education opt-out. Dr. Baskerville explained that the parents will be able to opt out of specific comprehensive health and PE lessons May 15 through the 19th. Lessons will cover personal growth and development, including puberty for grades five and social/sexual health for grade eight. Teachers were trained during an in-service session on the topics and question techniques. Dr. Baskerville thanked Ms. Schick, Myte, and teachers for their work. A letter will go out to the community following spring break outlining the opt-out procedure and genesis. Standardized testing. Dr. Baskerville reported that Piscataway High School completed the NJGPA assessment and ESL access testing. The state will no longer require this starstruck assessment. Summer programs. Registration is open for academic assistants for grades KPK through eighth during the summer. Dr. Baskerville said the program will run in the mornings from July 3 to August 10 at Grandview and Shore. Academic enrichment will be available for grades five through, from grades five through 11 for accelerated courses. Information has been sent out to qualifying students. Go Math, there is an updated version of Go Math for the elementary students. Ms. Dayton explained that it will provide resources we currently have, plus supplements and specific support for our diverse students populations. Coaches and Ms. Dayton will be trained. There will be three online sessions over the summer for teachers to attend for training. Ms. Cordino asked if the teachers would be compensated for their time, and Ms. Dayton confirmed they will be. Go Math will also work with teachers in the fall in-session days and after-school meetings. Ms. Cherry asks about the November in-service session, and Ms. Dayton said it would be a check-in for support and a chance for teachers to work with their WIGL program and incorporate it into instructions. Teachers will still have consumable books as well as manipulatives. Enhancing literacy practices. Ms. Albanese said many parents ask what happens next in regards to the English Language Arts curriculum. Literacy work is ongoing, and the department is always looking to enhance what it is doing. She discussed skills-based and thematic curriculum units. Said the literacy planning is always responding to the world. Ms. Cordino suggested that the teachers be encouraged to step out of their comfort zone and try new works. Ms. Albanese said that this is the direction the department is heading. Ms. Cordino commented the department on its vision. Ms. Scotto spoke about the great experiences she had when teachers shared literacy, literature, and film adaptations they were passionate about. Ms. Lieberman suggested incorporating the theme of transition with a possible writing activity to connect younger students with older students in their transitions. AP Physics 1 textbook. College Physics is being adapted as the textbook for AP Physics course. It is a college-level laboratory-based course that integrates exam prep with AP skill-building for the exam in math. And that's the end of the report for curriculum.
I have a question regarding the physical education opt-out.
Yes.
Is the lesson plan different from previous years? Is there something different?
Yeah, there's different, it's different based on the new standards of what we have to teach, but again, as Dr. Baskerville explains, like, we teach certain concepts of what the standards are, and it'll be in one lesson, parents will know, and they'll be able to opt out of those lessons.
When he sends out the letters, will the parents have an idea of what is covered in the lessons?
I think so, yeah.
Can they preview the lesson beforehand?
Yeah, I'll talk to Dr. Baskerville, but I believe that's ready to go to where they'll understand what's going to happen in those lessons, kind of an overview, and be able to opt out as well.
Okay, next on the agenda, we have the approval of minutes, Ms. Lane.
Be it resolved that the following minutes be approved as submitted. Business meeting, March 9, 2023, and executive session, March 9, 2023. Motion.
Second. All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
It's approved. Public comments from the floor. The Board of Education recognizes the value of public comment on educational issues and school matters of the community interest. In support of this position, the law established a period of public comment at every board meeting. Individuals wishing to speak must state their name and municipality. Comments are limited to three minutes duration, but an individual may speak a second time after all others who wish to speak on the topic have been heard. The board may require that individuals registered to speak prior to the beginning of the meeting. Participants may submit written material in support of their position. All statements in or questions shall be directed to the presiding officer, and no particular, no participant may address or question board members individually. All speakers are requested to express themselves in a civil manner with due respect for the dignity and privacy rights of others who legal rights may be affected. Please note, while it's not the board's intention to stifle comment on matters of legitimate concern to the school community, the public should be aware that if this statement violates the right of others under the law governing defamation and/or invasion of privacy, they may face personal liability to the injured party. If speakers are uncertain about legal ramifications of their comments, the board urges them to seek guidance beforehand from their own legal advisor. Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to speak during public session? If so, please come forward to the podium. Please state your name and where you reside at.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
My name is Sandra Chambers. My address is 5 Fox Hollow Drive, Piscataway.
I'm sorry, the first name is?
Sandra.
Sandra, thank you.
Yes. You're giving, I'm a little tired now, but I'll try to get through this, all right? So I've been here in Piscataway since 2016, and where my house is located, I'm on a cul-de-sac, but behind my house is, what's the name of that store? Come on, is it Shore? Off North and South Hill Road, that's Shore, right? Okay. So what I didn't know is that I was buying kids coming through my yard, okay? So ever since I've been here, the children come to, it's a cut-through for them, apparently. So when it first started to happen, I went to the school, and I can't remember who I met with, but I went to the front office and I told them my concerns. They're coming through my yard, and they're going through the woods, and it's unsafe for them as well. The comment from the person from the school was, "Well, that's a cut-through, and they've been doing it for years." I'm like, "Okay, but that's not solving my problem. I don't want them on my property, and it's unsafe for them as well." So that was 2016. So I then put my own no trespassing signs up, trying to do anything I can to try to stop them from coming through. I come home from work, you know, my signs are down, and I put them up a few times, you know, just now since then, I'm home more than I was over the course of the years, and so I see them more often now. So I started videotaping, and at one point, my grandson was at the house with his mother, and she said to them, "Guys, stop coming through the yard," and this young man made a comment about his private parts to her with a curse word and all that stuff, you know, and so it's just getting out of control now. The other day, I videotaped them, so I can show the superintendent, or maybe you, Ms. Cherry, at another time, but they're playing in the woods, and they come on my property, throwing garbage on the ground. This one lady, who I have a video of her, ran to my door, I'm looking right at her, bangs on my door, and they all start running. So now I'm dealing with this kind of stuff, and it's annoying, and now I can't take it no more. All right? So that's why I'm here before you guys. I need to stop. I don't know if a fence should be put up on your side, if you guys can work that out, but I can't have it no more. So I mean, it's just...
I'm sorry, Sandra, do you know if, where they cut, where they cut through, right?
Right.
On the other side of your property? Is it our property, or is it the community's?
I think some of it may be a part of the city, some of it may be a part of mine.
Right, sure. I'm going to give you my name, email address, and my phone number.
Okay.
I'd like to see that, but obviously, we won't do that.
I get it, I understand.
So when we get back from spring break, I'll be more than happy, we'll make an appointment when you come down here, we'll be able to check it and try to identify some kids and do everything we can.
Right, but it's not even just, I mean, because it's going to happen every year.
Yeah, I know what you're saying.
Because the little kids are watching their big brothers and sisters do it, and next year, it's going to be the same thing, so it's not going to stop. I mean, I thought it was eight, almost eight years now.
Right.
And I'm still dealing with the same problem. But now it's getting worse because they're getting a little, they're getting a little smart. And my next-door neighbor came to me the other day, he says, "Sandy, the kids were playing on your deck yesterday."
On your deck.
Yeah, so now, now you're on my, now you're really on my problem, and God forbid they get hurt, now I got a big problem, right? So then the parents are going, "Well, you know, you knew they were coming through. It's going to be a problem, now I'm going to be fighting this." You know, so safety, number one, I don't want to be in a lawsuit because somebody gets hurt on my property, the kids are playing, the way it's set up is a string, right? So, but there's a lot of trees that are down back there, so one of the trees fell, so it's going over, so they use that as their way of getting over. And I think I have a video of them playing on it, and one of the kids almost about to fall, and something I think fell, so I'm looking at all this, and it's just, it's too much, all right?
Yeah, I'm looking forward to you.
I'm sorry, can you give me your address again?
I have my card, I can give you my card, if you like it.
Just so we know what house it is, so we can get a better sense even before you talk to Dr. Rennelly. What was your address, again?
Number five?
Five.
Fox Hollow Drive.
Fox Hollow, thank you.
All right.
Yeah, so I look forward to speaking to you the week after next, and we'll make an appointment when you come here.
Can I give you my card?
Yeah, that'd be great. Thank you. I'm sorry you're going through this. Okay, great.
Thank you. Thank you for coming out and letting us be aware of this.
Appreciate your patience also.
Thank you.
Anyone else in public session wishing to speak? If not, can I have a motion to close public session?
Motion. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Public session is closed. Fiscal Planning and Operations, Dr. Connors?
Be it resolved, following motions identified as items A through H be approved as presented.
Second. Can you take the roll call, please, Mr. Secretary?
Mr. King?
Aye.
Mrs. Lane?
Yes.
Ms. Rashid?
Yes.
Ms. Scotto?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Mrs. Cordino?
Yes.
Dr. Connors?
Yes.
Ms. Cherry?
Yes.
Ms. Cherry.
There is nothing for policy, so next we'll go on to curriculum.
Be it resolved that the following motions identified as item A through D be approved as presented.
Second. Can you take the roll call, Mr. Secretary?
Ms. Rashid?
Yes.
Ms. Scotto?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Mrs. Cordino?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mrs. Lane?
Yes.
Dr. Connors?
I just had a question, actually for Nancy and for, we had a discussion one time about the way it was set up, code event, curriculum standards, class teachers, and so on. Is this something, did they change this for your, is it set up in such a way that it gives the amount of information?
I feel it's a little more specific.
Okay, because I was just wondering, it looked like a little bit more than it was before.
A little more detail.
Okay, I just wanted to, this is a question, okay, yes.
Ms. Cherry?
Yes.
Ms. Cherry.
Next, Pupils Services, Ms. Cordino?
Be resolved that the following motions identified as item A and B be approved as presented.
Second. Mr. Secretary, please take the roll call.
Ms. Scotto?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Mrs. Cordino?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mrs. Lane?
Yes.
Ms. Rashid?
Yes.
Dr. Connors?
Yes.
Ms. Cherry?
Yes.
Mrs. Cherry.
Administrative and Auxiliary, Ms. Scotto?
Be resolved that the following motions identified as items A through C be approved as presented.
Second. Mr. Secretary, can you take the roll, please?
Ms. Scotto?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Mrs. Cordino?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yep.
Mrs. Lane?
Yes.
Ms. Rashid?
Yes.
Dr. Connors?
Another comment, I just want to say that the Policy and Legislative Committee did a great job on Resolution B, and all of us together, and it's nice to see that. Yes.
Ms. Cherry?
Yes.
Mrs. Cherry.
Old business, does anyone have any old business that they would like to discuss? Being I don't see anyone having any old business, we'll move on to new business, is there any new business?
I have a couple.
Okay, there's a couple people.
Yeah, I just had a question, actually, or maybe a concern. In the superintendent's report, I noticed that, like, we're donating to Autism Speaks, and recently, I just like read about different things about Autism Speaks, and how it like actually promotes, like, it was founded to cure autism, which is like a negative connotation, and like, doesn't really do much to like support autistic people, it's more like, let's find a cure for this disease, and it's not like, that's like the wrong way to frame autism, in my opinion. So I was wondering if like, maybe we could look into like other organizations that are like a little more positive and more like autism appreciation, rather than like autism awareness, or like those sort of things?
Sure.
Because I don't think it's like sends the right message.
I will, thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Lane, I saw your hand up as well.
Yes, thank you. Just a report from the NJ SBA and Middlesex County School Board's side, I had the pleasure of attending two meetings concurrently, one on a Friday night of March the twenty-fourth in Trenton, and then the next morning, very early that morning, was the county activities meeting, leadership meeting, and a lot of great learnings from those particular events. At the New Jersey School Board's Board of Directors meeting, we discussed the Negotiations Data Portal, which is now available on the website through New Jersey School Boards Association. It's a very robust portal where you can run different scenarios, anyone can log in, any one of us can log in, and it's also open to our business administrator for Mr. Olivera to log in and see labor relations scenarios, data report generators, selections by county, by grade level, by enrollment, by district factor group, there's a lot of ways to, you know, slice and dice information and glean from that, so kudos to NJ SBA for building that particular tool. Another great item that came up was that NJ SBA will be revitalizing their website, and I made a recommendation that for any students that are in CTE or looking at graphic design and web building, if they win any awards throughout the state, I feel like, just like we did with Honeywell, students, you know, should be able to work alongside the NJ SBA professionals in rebuilding and rebranding that website, so they thought that that was a great idea. And then they discussed workshop, that will be hosted at the end of October, I believe they're just, they've just finalized the dates, I had written down the twenty-third through the twenty-sixth, but don't quote me on that, I want to recheck that, but it is.
Twenty-fourth through the twenty-sixth.
Twenty-fourth through the twenty-sixth, thank you. Registration has opened up as of four-three, they're looking for student performance proposals, they're already out, and they'll have a boardwalk theme this time with games, team-building activities, the school law forum is back, GOV one and GOV two sessions will be held, training sessions, they'll feature tracks this year for IT, for attorneys, there will be no training scheduled throughout the keynotes, which is an update from last year, and they will also update their app to a new app platform, so it's more engaging, where attendees can speak with each other, and there's keyword searches, they'll afford more number of seats in sessions, because we know, last year when we attended workshop, there were some hot topics, and it was a little too close for comfort, but they're affording some more space for us. They have QR codes that will be available, and let's see, they're developing a task force for staff shortages, talking about the two percent local tax levy cap, and innovations in special education, they're hosting a sped week, and let's see, that was that event, and then we spoke about the DUES ad hoc assessment committee, which we know Dr. Connors was a member of, so they talked about something, increases there, but of course, they'll be reaching out to each district with what those potential impacts could be. They're hiring on more staff at NJ SBA to assist all of us in our duties as board members, and then we had a robust government regulations update, budget presentation, and then the next morning, I attended the county associations meeting where we spoke about a number of things, but one was the safety and security for schools. We had some compelling statistics in a report that I'll be happy to share with you all, I have it in a hard copy form to distribute it throughout the administrative office.
Is that the task force on firearm safety?
Task force on firearm safety.
Firearms safety, yeah.
Yes.
The person that chaired that committee was the past president of New Jersey School Boards, Ray Wiss, and it's got a lot of great information in there, yeah.
It's very compelling, very compelling, so I'll be sure to share that with you all. I don't know if we talked about it at the last meeting, but Unsung Heroes was a fabulous event, they also have an eighth-grade dialogue event through NJ SBA that I'd like to take part of if it's offered, you know, throughout the counties, to see how that goes, I hear that that's very rewarding, and I think that's all that I have for me from my end, thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Lane. Ms. Cordino, I know you had some information.
Okay, so I just wanted to share, May sixth is going to be the, right, the glow for Cure, so this happens every year, and it's always a successful and fun event, it is, you know, it was started here in Piscataway through a family, it raises money for the Rutgers Cancer Institute, I wish I could be there this year, I will be running a different race in Indianapolis, but it's really a great event, that it's family-friendly for everyone, so I do have a brochure, you can just pass it around, if anyone is, you know, interested, there's a QR code where you can register.
It's the Woachik family and.
Correct, correct, I got those directly from Adira.
Yeah, from Adira.
To pass out, to, you know, spread the word and information, so that.
Yeah, her husband passed away of prostate cancer a long time ago, and when the kids were little.
Right, so it's a really great cause, and, you know, they're very active in giving back to the Cancer Institute. And then on another note, I just, I'm the Eisenhower, you know, liaison, so I just wanted to give, you know, a little update, a little props for Eisenhower, I went to their PTA meeting a couple weeks ago, and I just wanted to give a shout-out, they're doing such amazing things over at Eisenhower, they have such an incredible and active, you know, PTA, PTO organization, they've had a ton of fundraisers in the past where they've raised a lot of money that they're giving back to the school, they have their own little color run scheduled for May twelfth, so that's gonna be a fundraiser where kids are going to get sponsors, and then it's, you know, they're gonna be running and getting colors, and it sounds fantastic, so I just wanted to let them, that's coming up, they have their field day scheduled with multiple band houses, so, you know, a fun time for all the students, and they have another scholastic book fair in June fifth through seventh, where it's like the buy-one-get-one, so anyone that wants to come out and, you know, get some books, last book fair, they sold twelve hundred books, so they use that money to then give back, they're buying books for a lot of their students, they're having an author visit, so they bought the book for all of the students that the author wrote. So it's just, it's an honor to work with Eisenhower, it's just such a well-run school, and it's, it's, it's nice to see so much involvement, that makes it really like, it's just, it's amazing, so just wanted to give a shout-out to Eisenhower.
Thank you for that update. Missed the elementary school days and PTO and all the activities that take place at elementary schools.
It is, it's very, you know, when you, when you're, again, working in a middle school, and you forget like the magic of like little kids and their excitement, and, you know, it's, it is kind of magical, so I just wanted to share that.
Thank you.
Anyone else on any new business, sir?
I just have, I don't know, just open for suggestions, can we move the public comment section before the committee reports? Because if there is somebody here that just wants to, you know, have a grievance or say something, and then they have to sit through, I don't know, just a suggestion, if we can move it up before the committee reports.
I don't know if there's any prescribed order.
Nope.
Not to you all.
No, I mean, in the past, actually.
Years back, it was moved, I forgot from where to where, but it wasn't.
Yeah, it was further down.
It was in the beginning, and then people were late.
Yeah, in the past, what happened, well, actually, what we corrected at one point is that the committee reports came after we actually went through the agenda.
Right.
Which was like, didn't make any sense, because in the committee reports, you're gonna be voting on things in the agenda, so that we moved the committee reports up front, so it's a great suggestion, I mean, if you, for that person to have to sit here, yeah, so.
Just a suggestion.
I like that suggestion, too.
Been done before.
Yeah. Good for us to move next month?
Yes.
I'm aligned with that.
Yeah.
Okay. It's a go.
So you want it just after personnel before the committee reports?
Yes, I think that would be.
Okay, no problem. I have a suggestion.
The only, no. The only problem that I foresee, it's, that's fine if it's a small item, but if it's a, it's a controversial or long-winded or what you call it, you know, lots of people, something controversial where the public is really here to express their opinions, then that